We call the February 22nd meeting of the City Council Westfield to order. Just say the pledge of allegiance first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Jerome Reverend Stack from the Redian Christian Life Church is going to say invocation. Please.
Let us pray. Father, today we've gathered and business will be done in this place. We ask for your help. May you give us clarity and insight into the problems that need to be addressed and wisdom for the solution. May there be a unity and purpose in this room even though there are differences of opinions. God, I pray that the things that are decided here today would further your plans and purposes for this city and its citizens in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Cindy Gassert, can you please note the presence of a quorum?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, we can hear you.
You can, okay. Mike Johns?
Here.
Joe Edwards?
Here.
Troy Patton?
Here.
Scott Fry?
Here.
Cindy Spoljeric?
Here.
Jake Gilbert?
Here.
Scott Willis?
Here.
Would you have a quorum?
Thank you, Cindy. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Unknown participant is now joining.
Okay. Is that Andy? All right, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Does anyone have?
Is now exiting.
Welcome to the COVID world. Does anyone have any additions or changes to the, to the minutes of the February 8th meeting? Here are no changes. I'm, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. But Joe Edward.
George moved second.
Second.
Jake Gilbert.
Right.
Jake Gilbert second. Okay. By voice acclamation then for approval of the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is claims. I, these are the approval of the claims docket for February 22nd, 2021. Can I have a motion to approve the claims docket?
Make a motion to approve the claims?
Second.
Motion made by Troy and seconded by Joe. Again by voice acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All passes. Tonight we've got, actually have two special presentations. The first is a special presentation by Diana Payton from the, and it's on the Historic Cabin Project. Diana's with the Westfield Historic Society.
Westfield, Washington Historical Society. Do I leave this on? Can I take it off? Probably breathe a little bit better. Good evening, council. Andy, if Andy's on the phone, good evening, mayor. I am Diana Payton. I'm president of the Westfield, Washington Historical Society. My presence this evening is here to request from the city and council permission to reconstruct an 1830s historical log cabin on the lot adjacent to 130 Penn Street. The address is 136 Penn, which is right here on the other side of the wall. I also ask for a partnership with the reconstruction. Please let me get, begin with our obligation as a community in a short history. Those who have rich heritage have a twofold obligation. First, to understand and appreciate that heritage. Second is to cherish it, to preserve it, and to transmit that heritage to the young minds of succeeding generations. Without appreciation of this heritage, we are cheated of the knowledge from those that pioneered this land before us. Saving this cabin has prompt, was prompted by a sense of appreciation and obligation. We shall never be able to repay all of our obligation, but we can render tribute to whom tribute is due and honor to whom honor is due. We are indebted to the Quaker families who agonized and suffered traveling to Hamilton County and founding the town of Westfield in 1834. Quakers came to America because of poverty, poverty, cheap land, and religious freedom. Migration was not an easy task. Crossing the stormy land took three to seven months. Most were poor and generally were indentured servants to pay for their passage. They were pitched and tossed about in frequent storms and suffered severely from the lack of food and water. They landed in Delaware and soon afterwards migrated via the Great Wagon Road to North Carolina. In North Carolina, the Quakers were put in difficult positions with the wars and with the, they were thought of unpatriotic for not fighting for independence and slavery. It became overpopulated. Threats of violence were used against them. Homes were burned. Their homes were also used to take care of wounded soldiers. So, the movement began northward for a better and simpler way of life. These early Quakers still have descendants living in the Westfield area, and they include, and I'm just going to name a few, the Allens, the Baldwins, the Barkers, the Braes, Days, Edwards, Chances, Furnaces, Henshaws, Carries, Osburns, McHulguns, Whites, Wheelers, Stalkers, and Hyatts, just to name a few. One early settler was Nicholas Barker. Nicholas Barker was born in 1795 in North Carolina and died in Westfield in 1869. Nicholas and his wife family had several children, and along with many other Quakers came from North Carolina in wagons nicknamed Gut Shakers. The Wilderness Road was a trail for foot and horseback travel due to the dense forests and overgrowth, and it was a difficult for a wagon to travel, thus this nickname. Slow travel rate was very tiring and took about 85 days from North Carolina. Some say it made death welcome and eternal rest desirable. In 1835, after this long journey, Nicholas Barker settled on a piece of property just north of State Road 32 on Shady Nook Road. It's not far from what became Westfield, Indiana, or what was just Westfield, Indiana. He quickly began to build a cabin 20 feet wide by 22 feet long to shelter his family and 11 children. It was used as the Barker home for several years until he built a more modern farmhouse directly in front of the cabin. Nicholas repurposed the cabin as a barn, and later a barn was built completely around the cabin. As years passed, the property changed hands until 1952. In 1952, Carl and Joanne Rata Bush bought it. 10 years later, to their surprise, they removed some boards on the center section of the cabin and uncovered, or of the barn, and uncovered a log cabin. The cabin was encased in the barn until it was donated to the Historical Society in January of last year. Members worked feverishly in the cold and the snow to inspect the logs, to be sure that it was salvageable, to clean the years of debris out of the cabin, calling experts in and getting it ready for removal. As you know, it's resting in the barn outside of City Hall here. I should have said comfortably, but I'm not sure it's so comfortable. We believe it is time to reconstruct our cabin. Our vision is a beautiful historic cabin located by the City Hall to be used for a welcoming center, a meeting place, a small wedding, no reception, no food, Santa House, and for educational purposes. Until COVID-19 hit, we had 300 to 500 school-aged children come through the museum each year, and they were so concentrated on the Underground Railroad, and they were so wanting to learn about history. You see, I believe in reconstruction of this cabin is not for me and it's not for you. This is for future generations to learn of our Westfield history, to be able to physically touch a piece of that history and to document our founding fathers. What a gift to our community. What appreciation for the thoughtfulness and the foresight of our city to preserve such a great piece of history. Can you imagine? As I stated in the beginning, the Westfield, Washington Historical Society is here this evening requesting the city to partner with us to provide a site and reconstruct this almost 2,000-year-old historic icon. What a cool designation. What an addition to downtown. What foresight of this city and council to save a piece of our history for everyone to learn about Westfield, pioneer life, and the Underground Railroad. Please consider this once-in-a-lifetime project for our future and for our future generations. I do have a couple slides that I'd like to share with you, and then I'd like to have some of your comments and questions. So if we can go to the next slide. This slide is, this is Nicholas Barker and Fanny Barker, his wife. Nicholas was born in 1795. He died in 1869 in Westfield. Fanny was born in 1797 and died in Westfield in 1870. They are the ones that actually built the log cabin and raised 11 children in it. Next slide. This is where the log cabin is located, and I don't have a pointer, so I'm going to walk over here for Jim or Steve if you would want to show. Our log cabin, it was located within that barn. And in this, in January of last year, I found out that the wrecking ball was out there. So I went out there one Monday morning and literally stood in front of the wrecking ball and said, "Please, please, don't destroy." They had no idea the log cabin was in there, and Langston Development was, oh, they are just wonderful to work with. They gave me two weeks to get it down and out of there. Condon Prairie couldn't even touch it. They said it would take four years, but we did it, and I'll show you. In front of the barn is the farmhouse that Nicholas built after they moved out of the log cabin. Now that is totally gone now, but that's the Rata Bush property just out here north of the cemetery on Shady Nook Road. Okay, next slide. Don't tell the Historical Society I put this in here. This is my favorite picture. We are looking out the north window of the cabin, and behind me stands Steve Leilioff. And Steve Leilioff is our cabin master, and he's the historian. He knows anything and everything there is to know about logs and log cabin and has put several up, so he has really helped us. If you'll notice, some of the logs are 26 and 27 inches tall. These are native timber right off the property from where this cabin was built. So that's my favorite picture. Okay, you can go on. The rest of them doesn't really matter, but this is the cleanout. This is looking, we are on the south side of the cabin, and we're actually looking into the cabin and showing the debris and the cleanout. The large opening that you see there is where the fireplace was, and the fireplace will be real, built back in that. Next slide. Some more debris. There was lots and lots and lots of stuff. As you can see, it took a lot of cleanup. This is the east wall and a door. You can see that there's a door there. This will probably be the back door of our cabin. Next slide. Well, this is it. It all began. It's a tedious job of demolition. We were all wondering at this point in time, is this barn going to fall? Are we going to get this cabin? Is it going to be okay? Once it sees daylight, is it going to be worth saving? So that was the beginning. Excellent. And we found it, and still thinking, oh my goodness, we've got a lot to go here. Are we going to be able to do this? Next slide. We did it. This is it. You're looking at the south wall where the fireplace was. The back door. This is the back door and the window, so this cabin will be turned like this on this property out here, if you'll allow us to put it there. The front door is on the west side of the property. First time this cabin had seen the daylight of light for about 150 years. Next slide. The ceiling was lifted. The ceiling was cut into two pieces and lifted. We did save the ceiling. We are going to try to reuse the ceiling. Not real sure at this point in time if that's going to be feasible, but we are going to try to do that. And as you can see, the top plates had been taken off of, off of the cabin. Next slide. It's coming down. It's coming down, just about down. And if you see off to the side, our expert came in and showed us how to number all of the logs. So all the logs are numbered exactly how they were when it was actually built. So our cabin contractor can come back in, he'll have those numbers, and be able to recreate the cabin. Lot of debris still left to be cleaned up, but that's our baby. Next slide. Cabin's down. Lots to clean up. That's what's left. Next slide. Our logs are loaded, and they're being, getting ready to be hauled to the resting place, which you all know the resting place is out here in the, in the city barn, and that was one of the first loads. Next slide, please. This is the last load. We call this a success. We had two weeks and one day from the gifting of the cabin to us to get it to the barn, and we did it. Two weeks and one day, we did it. Next slide. This is our proposed location, which is historical in itself. This building, the front part of this building is an 1850s Methodist church, and that lot was actually used for the wagons and the horses when they came to church here. So the, this is a very historical building, and that is a historical lot. It's, the address is 136 Penn Street, and we are talking, there's a lot of trees in the way there, but, or branches, but kind of in the clearing, you can see a little bit where we're proposing. Right there. Next slide. This is from the back view when the leaves are off the trees. We don't think that we're going to bother any trees. We're going to try to do what we can, especially the big tree. Jim, what is that tree? What is that tree?
Sugar maple.
Sugar maple. We do not want to disturb that sugar maple. That is an old, old tree. But the little tree in the center there may come down. We're not sure it's still alive, and there is one to the very left of there that is dead. It is one of the ash trees, and it is dead. We are proposing about where the, see where the, the dirt-looking stuff is right there in the center, that'll be about where we're proposing the cabin. Next slide. And this is what we're proposing. Couple things I want to let you know about this, though. Our cabin only had one pitch, one window on each side, so although this cabin is showing two windows, our cabin will only have one window, and it'll be kind of a little bit closer to the door, but it will have a shed roof on the front, it'll have a shed roof on the back so that we can protect the logs. It will have the fireplace on the east end, and when you walk up to the cabin and walk in, you're going to see an 1830s log cabin. Although, and I'm going to ask my building guys if they would kind of help me with this little bit. We, we are proposing to put the log cabin back to like it was as much as possible as in 1835, with a few exceptions. One is, we want to put a real foundation in it, because this cabin, our cabin, was sitting on five great big rocks, and it sat right down on the ground in the mud and the dirt. So we want to have a foundation and have concrete in it so that this cabin is going to be sustainable. We don't want to put this cabin up, and in 20 years, it'd be rotted to the ground because of the rodents and the, the bugs and whatever to get to it. So that's one thing. We are going to have a small heater and a small air conditioner in the foundation of it, and that is to keep it cool in the summer when there's a meeting and to keep it warm in the some, in the winter when there's a meeting or something going on. Santa Claus in there. I welcome any questions or comments.
I got one question. It's actually for Jeremy, though, if I could. Jeremy, I know you and I've talked about, can we create a park space around this to maintain the structure long-term, because obviously it's going to require some maintenance and some funding long-term to keep the structure viable?
So we've talked a little bit more about that and had a pretty good meeting last week with the historical folks, as well as Mike and Cindy who were there. Sorry, Counselor Johns and Counselor Spoljeric. I think the, their desire and our, our desire after all is for it to not be a park property, for it to be retained as a city ownership, and then some sort of land lease or other type of agreement so that the Historical Society can own it, maintain it, operate it how they see fit, and then carry on that path.
Got it. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Scott, I would like to add to that. If it's your desire, we're, we are not totally opposed to that being a park. If, if that's what you want it to be, we are fine with that if it means that we can go ahead and put the cabin up.
Yeah, and I don't have a preference. To me, it's just main, it's making sure we have the funds long-term to maintain it. And I know it's, if it's in a park, that gives us obviously the ability out of the park funds to take care of that, but you know, if, if Mike and Cindy have looked at other angles, I'm fine with, with what. I don't, I'm not tied to any ideas there.
Okay.
Part of the, the way Hadley Park was set up, the city of town then was given money by a business out here, north of town, and we had no agreement to that. And so the committee got that built, and, but it has not been, you know, the bricks are uneven. I suppose sometime they'll be maintained, but anyway, they gave it to the city so they wouldn't, you know, have to maintain it. And people, you know, over the years, they come and go, and, and some of us even passed away, but I hope that didn't happen too quick. But it, I think it's, if it's held in a public trust of some kind, it would be better off. I don't know what that vehicle might be, but whatever the lawyers and, and the city administration wants to come up with, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
And we just need to be able to maintain it. It's, it's wood, and wood's fungible, I guess.
Yes. We are planning an overhang to protect the sides of it and a porch on the back and the front of it to protect the sides of it. And Joe, you're absolutely correct. The sidewalk up at Hadley is in terrible shape. Somebody's going to get hurt up there. What we propose to do is we are going to make a concrete walk to the front of it and a concrete walk going out of the back of it, because it has a front door and a back door, and we are going to have the concrete, and then we will put pavers on the top of it, which brings me to the next. These are the bricks that we're talking about. This is going to be a fundraiser for us. We are going to offer these to businesses. The business brick with their logo will be $200. A family brick will be $100. And a family brick can be a memorial brick, it can be just whatever you want to put on it. It's up to three lines. So that is a program that we are going to start as soon as we hear from, from you folks. But these bricks, instead of, Jeremy, up there, that's just laid on like sand. We're going to make the concrete walk, and then we're going to place these bricks on the concrete walk, so they're going to be stable. They're not going to do this. The concrete will hold it. The concrete is going to be.
We're going to use a permeable concrete and allow it, water to go through it. That way, the water will not lay on top of a solid piece of concrete, freeze, and of course push or lift those bricks.
I, I think, I think the plan is a, is a good plan. The city, I think, will be happy to assist. I mean, we'll probably take a vote on that or get the, at least the meaning or the leaning of the council, but I would think that the council would support doing this. History's an important part. It's easily forgotten, and it should be remembered.
We totally agree.
I, I would add to it that I, I did spend a couple hours with you last week with Cindy Spoljeric, and it was extremely informative. Cabin is neat cabin. It's about 21 by 22 feet, and I looked at some of the building plans, and it's going to be a top-notch cabin. I mean, we're talking about a concrete foundation with crawl space under it and your HVAC elements located under there, retaining as many of the logs as possible, probably 80% of all the logs are going to be original.
Yes.
And then with the, with the porches overhanging, I mean, just done the right way. I think you, we, we talked about having a ramp in the back or something, so it is accessible.
Yes, it'll be handicap accessible. That's current, yes.
And so, so I think definitely, I totally in support of that concept. We need to retain our history, if you will. We also talked a little bit about the managing of the project, and I think we, we, you know, once we leave here tonight, we need to turn it back to the city and to the attorneys to discuss how, how best to handle this. We had talked about possible lease back or leasing the property here. I think the, the important thing is to give the Historical Society the motivation to, to manage and to run the cabin from a business perspective to the best business way possible. And to do that, we've got to really give you the, at least some form of the ownership and responsibility to maintain that. As I understand, it's going to be used for various public functions. We'll need to have insurance on it. There'll need to be liability insurance to protect the city, but all those things are doable and possible, and I'm sure that we've got, we've got the brain power to, to make that happen. So definitely in my support. Any other counsel comments? Well, then I think we should.
Mr. Gilbert? Pardon me?
The costs.
Good question. We just got a bid last Thursday when we were in our meeting, and it's going to cost a hundred and forty thousand. Now, that doesn't include certain parts of the cabin that the society is going to have to, we're gonna have to raise some money. Because, but we do have, I do wanna let you know, and I think we explained this to Cindy and to Counselor John, John's, we do have in-kind donations. One in-kind donation is custom concrete. Custom concrete is going to put our foundation in for us. Shelby Concrete is going to donate the concrete at cost. We will have to pay the cost of the concrete. Burton Electric is going to actually hook up the electricity for us, do the electrical. And Wilkins Lawn Care is going to do either the digging of the foundation and/or the landscaping. And I kinda have put things on hold a little bit, because not knowing, you know, I don't wanna get too much further into this without the council's blessing and, you know, okay if where we're gonna put it. And on the other hand, I don't want this to go out so far that we lose our in-kind donations either.
Diana, do you have an idea of how much you're gonna be able to generate through your Building Black program?
We have high expectations. We're hoping to sell five hundred bricks. I don't know that we can do that, but we're gonna try our darndest to do that. I really think we may be looking at two or three hundred. Depending on how it goes over. See, COVID is such a wild thing right now. We don't know how people are going to give or if they can give or... Any other questions or comments?
What will the money go towards, the front of the brick?
It will go, because we are going to have to pay some of the cabin, cabin guys, I need your help here. The brick money, we thought we would have a slush fund, because if the city doesn't take this into a park, we are gonna have to keep upkeep on it. So we're gonna have to have something there. If a shingle blows off, we're gonna have to replace it. If a window starts leaking, we're gonna have to fix that. If we have rodents, they gotta go. Anybody who knows me knows I'm scared to death of a mouse. Those kinda things. The money will one hundred percent go to the cabin. We do have a cabin fund that we started last year. We started collecting some monies, but because of COVID, I think by the end of February, we did it for what, about three weeks? About three months. But it just dwindled because of COVID, we couldn't get out to the people, we couldn't. So we do have a little bit of a slush fund, the society does have a little bit.
We prefer the Chikara Operating Fund.
My goodness, operating fund, strike that.
I think what's happening here, I think we need to wait to hear back from the city as to how they plan on structuring this. If it's going to remain under the control of the Historical Society, then I suspect that what we ought to plan on, just figuring that that money that you generate from the bricks, you're probably gonna need for operating income to manage your home throughout the year.
Yes.
Okay. But if it turns into a park and that's the way that the city decides to go, that could be different. But I think...
Also, if it is a park, the revenues would go back to the city. So if someone would rent the building, if someone would have a small wedding there, they would rent the building, the revenue would go back to the city.
Jeremy?
So thank you again, and I think really what we need to hear from the council is two things. We believe, from a staff perspective, that the lot next door is a good spot for it. It's in a historic district, it's beside this building that is a historic building, and I think long-term, these two parcels can remain forever, whether it's a historic society property long-term, or if it's a city property that they're operating out of. But as we outgrow these chambers and move to a civic center or something down the road, I think this overall building would be a really good museum for them on a bigger scale. So we would be asking, or I guess getting your permission, are you all comfortable with the lot next door where the cabin is being proposed? So that's question number one. Question number two, if so, how do you all wanna fund it? What we had talked about was a not-to-exceed type situation for the hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is what we think our all-in budget is. If they draw that down, then obviously we don't come out of pocket for those things. The reason we were chasing the park idea was to utilize park impact fees to be able to help offset the cost. If the council doesn't want it to be a park or sees another revenue stream that can help pay for it, it doesn't need to be a park. But you all would need to make that decision. So is it okay to go there and how do you wanna fund it? And then that will trigger what happens next. So if it's property tax dollars or some other revenue account, but I can't utilize park dollars on it unless it's on a park property, if that makes sense. So those are kinda the decisions you have to make.
Jeremy, on those two questions, is it okay to go there? Just curious, was there, Diana, was there any consideration of putting it at Grand Junction, so that more people in the city would access it? I understand it's not exactly a historic district like this, but a lot of people are gonna be at Grand Junction.
In the beginning, there was two sites that the city talked to us about. One was over in the beginning of Asa Bell's Park over here, and then the other one was over here. We really prefer this site because we're right here and we're open on Saturday mornings. And when I talked to, who's that, Indiana Security, Indiana? Homeland Security, thank you, Homeland Security. If we go over there, we're gonna have to build restrooms, there's gonna be a lot more expense, there's gonna be a lot more expense with electricity. I mean, we're looking at more. Plus, we would have to take children from our museum, cross Union Street, and go over to the log cabin. Where it is right here, we have safety. We're right here next door to it. We don't have to cross the street, we don't have to cross the alley, we don't have to, it's right here. So for the safety of the children.
And then Jeremy, I guess, to help us make the decision on the park, I mean, what will be the yearly operating expenses if we do take it over as a park?
I don't know that we've fully determined that.
Our best guess before we can make a decision?
I can't imagine it being an overly expensive activity. I mean, obviously, we're already doing the mowing and the landscaping of these properties anyway, so there's no additional cost there. We will have to do some preventative insect control, things like that. There was conversation about pulling power off of this building, so not having to drop a new meter service and some of those things. We haven't fully vetted out whether or not that's possible based on the capacity of the service here, it's an old building as well. But I can't imagine it being more than a few thousand dollars a year, really, to maintain it the whole time. I think that if Historical Society owns it, they'll be able to generate the revenue necessary to maintain it, plus they have a lot of volunteers that can help with some of that stuff. So to go back to your question about Grand Junction, I can't think of a place in the park where it would be, where it would fit, from an orientation perspective. Plus, I think being up here in the historic district gives it a level of protection as a historic property that it wouldn't have down there in the park, south of, really south of Jersey Street. So that's not a historic district down there, starts at Jersey and goes north and extends north on Union, and this is in there. So long-term, if we wanna maintain it as a historic piece forever, I think it really wants to be up here in the historic district.
Do you have any preference, Jeremy, whether it be in the park or not?
I don't, quite honestly. We don't have the expertise or the manpower, really, to manage a cabin like this. I don't think that we, as a city, are gonna do as good a job as the Historical Society would, just because there's an ownership and a level of pride there, that it would just become an amenity for us, that we would, yeah. So if I had a preference, no, it would not be a park property, it would stay over there and then we can figure all the other things out down the road.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Hey, this is, can I weigh in for a sec?
Hi, Cindy.
Hi, I think I got an actual, I'm sorry. I just wanna say thank you. This has been a big undertaking for you and the Historical Society. So I was there and saw the cabin when it was actually up, and I felt the presence of it, and it was something incredibly special. You know, my son got to see that, too. And it was incredibly meaningful for us to be able to experience it. So, you know, I'm really hoping that our future generations can experience something similar to that. We've had to, you know, remove a lot of structures for our growth, and this is something that we can help contribute, you know, to save our historical nature and the importance of it. So, you know, I'm a big advocate of wanting to see this happen. I think that the site next to City Hall is just about perfect, actually. You know, it's an underutilized area right now, and it's right in that historic district, like we've talked about, next to our City Hall, which could potentially be in the future a Historical Society building, if that's the way it went. So when you just look at all these things together, you know, this would be a big miss if we did not actually help them get this done. I would like to see it remain in the hands of the Historical Society. I think it's a big source of pride for them, and I just, you know, not to say it wouldn't be if it becomes a city park asset, but it does put it in a different category. And I really like the way it helps bring together the Historical Society and offers them actually more marketability, really. So just wanted to weigh in there, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Any other questions or comments? Well, on behalf of this Historical Society, we wanna thank the council and the mayor, if he's listening, for all the support in this and hope that we can really make this something very, very unique and something very awesome for our community. You know, like I said in the beginning, you and I are gonna enjoy this, but future generations are the ones that's going to say, wow, look what they did. I wish you could see these school kids coming in, third and fourth grade kids, coming in and seeing this historical stuff. And to see this cabin and to be able to actually feel, touch, and look at it would just be phenomenal. Thank you very, very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think I would make a motion, if a motion is in order, to support the Historical Society in what they're doing, as far as the location, over here, right next door. And we would provide assistance up to a hundred and forty thousand dollars to see that the cabin is erected properly. And, you know, as far as the ownership, I'm pretty flexible on that, whatever's the best. Historical Society and the city, I would always think that that would be about the same, but there's a few details to be figured out, that's pretty obvious. But I just think that we need to support this, get it going, and make it happen if we can.
Joe's made the motion, do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
This is Scott Frye, I just wanna be clear on something. Joe, are you asking for the motion of supporting the location and that alone, or are you also supporting that and the funds up to a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Both, yes.
Both.
Scott, did you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to support both the location and maximum of a hundred and forty dollars of assistance, a hundred and forty thousand dollars of assistance. Can we, Cindy, can we call a vote on that?
Yes. Sorry, Scott Willis?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Cindy Spoljeric?
Yes.
Scott Frye?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Motion carries seven...
Diana, thank you. We look forward to seeing more and hearing more about this as we move forward. Second presentation tonight, a special presentation by Danielle Tolan, Township Trustee Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which hopefully is coming from the federal government.
It is.
Because we're tapped out now.
Yes, I'm not asking for any money from you guys, I just wanted to give you an update. Thank you, council members, for having me tonight. I'm Danielle Carrie Tolan, I'm the Westfield, Washington Township trustee. I'm also the Hamilton County Trustees Association's president. If you'll just go to the first slide, please, Kevin, since I don't have a little mouse. I just really first wanna let you guys know, since I haven't really been in front of you guys, of what the township services that we offer as a township. And the first thing that we do offer is township assistance. So people come to us within our own township to ask for emergency assistance, and we provide that through housing, whether it's rent or mortgage, or if they're homeless. We help with hotels or shelter services. We also help with utilities and transportation, medical services, so a variety of things that we offer our residents here. We also do fire protection, so we provide all the fire protection and ambulance services for outside the unincorporated area here in Westfield, Washington Township. We also own Station Eighty-two there on One Hundred and Fifty-first Street. We also provide cemetery care, so those are, we maintain and provide services for those that are abandoned or pioneer cemeteries within our own township. We also do burial services, so those that are indigent, that aren't able to provide their own services for burial, we provide that as well. Weed control, but I work with Kevin Todd very closely with weed control, the unincorporated area, and then fence disputes. We also provide other services, whether it's appointees to the Planning Commission or library, and we also have a Parks Department and various other things throughout the township. I can tell you, last year, we had a total of three hundred and thirteen recipients through our township office, and we also had a number of three hundred and forty-four referrals out to other agencies to help. So we spent about ninety-one thousand dollars in township assistance last year. That's not really why I'm here, but I wanted to give you guys a brief overview of what we do. Why I'm really here is to tell you guys about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So this is a U.S. Department of Treasury, this was in the most recent stimulus bill. This was an opportunity for seven counties here in Indiana to apply for this additional funding, the state also got funding. And Hamilton County was one of those recipients. On that behalf, Hamilton County received a little over ten million dollars of those funds to help with rental and utility assistance. That is going to be administered through the Hamilton County Trustees Association by myself in Westfield, Washington Township. So this is federal dollars, thank goodness, right? Not our own money. So just to give you a little bit of background, I'm not gonna read word for word, you guys are very able to read your own documents. But just to let you know, there are nine townships in Hamilton County, so all of us will be doing our job here across the township. We also have, we'll have an online pre-screening, so there will be an online application form that everybody will have to apply through, and it will do verification, whether it's ID verification, it will do federal verification, because we can't cross dollars with federal agencies. So that's a little bit about the program. There definitely are guidelines within your packet, so they have to be a renter in Hamilton County, they also have to be affected by COVID, they have to be at the eighty percent of the, eighty percent of the area median income or below... or below to receive this assistance. So the chart's in the document for you guys to review. But all of that will be vetted through the online process. And there's also other eligibility requirements um, within that document that you guys can read. I just really wanted to update you guys what we're doing here and just inform you as leaders in our community. So that way if you know of anybody in our community that's needing assistance and help actually share this out on your, on your guys' platform. We've reached out to over three hundred community partners in Hamilton County. We've also reached out to over two hundred landlords and all the elected officials and municipalities and school boards that I'll be going in front of, kind of giving a little update just to make them aware of this program. We will have a call center and that call center will be going through HAND, which is a housing agency here in Hamilton County. And our launch date for this program is March fifteenth. You're fine. I, in the packet, I just gave some, um, stats so you guys can see. This was pre-COVID. This is something that we put together, pre-COVID. So these numbers don't even hit the mark at all anymore. Um, so recently before COVID, we had one point three five evictions per day in Hamilton County. Um, just some numbers for you guys so that way you know here in Westfield. We have over three thousand renters here in Westfield, Washington Township. And let's see here, forty-two percent of those are houseburdened. So, you can understand we were going to see a huge need, um, here coming up soon. Right now we're seeing, um, in our township offices, we're seeing people coming to us with bills of rent assistance or housing assistance up in the eight thousands to ten thousands currently. And most of those are not being renewed by their landlords. Just to give you guys a little data. Any questions about the program? I don't wanna take too much of your time.
I do Danielle.
Yeah.
Can I do up for something?
Yeah, go ahead Cindy.
So if somebody has a back amount, you know, owed, can they get that assistance? And then is anyone helping them to make sure in the future that they can't be evicted? I know we have other programs, you know, state and federal being considered for that. But is there something that ensures that they'll actually have that housing?
Yeah, um, so there is an agreement with the landlords for that and we are doing arrears currently for this program. We won't launch, launch forward rentals until we get through probably the first few months to see where we're at and see how much far we spend down these dollars. So we're just doing the, the arrears currently.
And one more thing, you didn't happen to mention in what you do, all your wonderful programs and, and that you offer for the township. And I mean, it's in a wide array for many different, uh, preschoolers, adults, seniors, everybody. So thank you for that.
Yes. Cindy's, uh, a big proponent of our, um, programs. Uh, so we do have parks programs within our parks department. So we offer adults, senior and youth programs, whether it's, um, physical activity or service programs for them. Thanks Cindy.
I'd just like to say, um, work for Danielle a lot through the Wellbeing Coalition and just over the years, I've known Danielle for a long time. And she does a wonderful job and the township does a wonderful job. And I think a lot of times people make assumptions about Westfield. And as someone who works in the schools, I know that our neighbors to the south have traditionally one percent free and reduced lunch and our neighbors to the west have one percent free and reduced lunch. But Westfield always has at least sixteen to nineteen percent free and reduced lunch. And people always lump us in, in an area, especially with some of the beautiful new developments and so forth and so on. And I think sometimes our marginalized community is forgotten. And, um, not because we're not a caring people. I just think we make assumptions sometimes and we need to look a little harder. And Danielle's a person that always is there to take care of, uh, the people in need. So I would just like to say thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Good point. Danielle, thank you for your report and thanks for everything you do.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you guys for letting me give you an update. Onto your meeting.
Okay, uh, the next category on our agenda here is old business. Ordinance twenty-one dash oh-five, which is the Wheeler Landing PUD Amendment four. Uh, this ordinance had a council introduction on January eleventh, went to, uh, public hearing at the APC on, on, uh, February eleventh. The APC met last, uh, two weeks ago, a week ago, February sixteenth, and received a eight to zero favorable recommendation for approval at the APC. Um, is there anyone here from the project that wants to speak about the project?
Thank you Councilman Jones.
Eric, I didn't see you down there.
That's okay. Behind the masks, we, it's hard to see each other sometimes. Pardon me here. Uh, my glasses on, I'm officially old. Uh, Eric Douthat from Church, Churchill and Antrim, one sixteen North Union. I have with me online here today, uh, John Hart, President of the J.C. Hart, uh, Company, Randy Sherman of Weaver Sherman Design and the architect of the project, and Andy Taylor from Kimley Horn, who's the civil engineer of this particular project. If you could turn to the Wheeler Landing site plan, not that particular one, but the one that shows Wheeler Landing in general. There you go. Um, Wheeler Landing, uh, is envisioned as a large mixed-use development in the heart of the family sports, uh, capital of America District of the comprehensive plan. The Wheeler Landing PUD was approved in September of two thousand and eighteen. It's a two hundred and ninety-five acre mixed-use development and incorporates four separate design areas for development. The project here is being presented is within Area One, which is that area right there of, uh, of, uh, of Wheeler Landing. It's the PUD district, uh, it's the area of the district that fronts the Monon and Wheeler Road. J.C. Hart is proposing a high-end luxury apartment community that has been designed to create an urban feel along the Monon Trail corridor, which fits within the intent outlined when the Wheeler Landing PUD, uh, was initially, uh, accepted. It's been designed to, uh, the proposed project is consistent with the concept plan that was approved as part of the PUD. The community that J.C. Hart's proposing here today is unique to the city of Westfield and will draw from other urban projects Hart has completed, uh, along the Monon to the south. It was also conceived consistent with the comprehensive plan with dense housing options and supporting commercial, uh, uses. Consistent with those contemplated dense housing options, the petitioner J.C. Hart is proposing to develop a high-end, two hundred and fourteen unit apartment community on seven point six five acres adjacent to the Monon Trail and just south of the W, of the Westfield, Washington, uh, nadatorium and future YMCA. This use has already been zoned. So the use for apartments has already been approved. We're here merely today to discuss some architectural changes, some landscaping changes and some parking exceptions. If you wouldn't mind turning to the color, uh, landscaping plan. I think that's a good place for us to start. One more. That's it? Yep. Um, thank you. Uh, these missed, these amendments are consistent with the modifications to landscaping, architectural, parking standards with the frontage on the Monon. That's quite, you're good. Yes, that one right there if you can get to it. Well, that's okay. That's good enough. Um, with frontage on the Monon Trail, so you can see the, uh, the Monon goes right through there for us. Uh, with fr- with frontage on the Monon Trail, the design is orientated towards the, an urban atmosphere. This amendment would, uh, permit plannings to be installed as depicted on the attached, uh, landscaping exhibit. So what you see here is what you're gonna get when it comes to landscaping. Um, we plan to review the landscape plan with the Department of Works to confirm that the species planted along, along the street frontage avoid any conflict with any newly installed infrastructure. The attached concept plan shows how the urban character and proposed layout address the Monon to the east, the adjacent roadways to the north and west and future planned Plaza to the south. So the Plaza is gonna be here across the road. Actually, I think my orientation's wrong, isn't it? The Plaza's gonna be there. Yep. The attached concept plan, oh, uh, the proposed concept plan includes a one point nine three parks. That does not include the areas that are outside of, that are here, that are on the opposite side. If you ha- if you include those parks, we would meet the two point zero park standard, parking standard. If you wouldn't mind turning it to the, um, that apartment concept, concept from the northeast? Yes. So this particular view is what you're gonna, if you were looking from the northeast down, what Wheeler Landing would look like. What the J.C. Hart Wheeler Landing would look like. Um, so the Monon moves here. This is the road to the north. The Plaza would be in this area and this is the, some of the internal parking that we're talking about here today. Before I turn you over to Randy Sherman, who's the architect for this particular project, I want to point out that the character exhibits are exactly what we will be building. This includes color, brick and all of those other details. So what you see is what you get for this particular project. Randy, are you able to log in?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
All right. Well, Randy Sherman, Weaver Sherman Design. Thank you Eric. Um, the slide that's currently up is an aerial view of the site. And what we were looking to, uh, do with this development, uh, oh, yeah, thank you, is to, uh, create a series of buildings that enclose the block at its perimeter. So what we create is a pedestrian-oriented front perimeter to the site with all the, uh, architecture facing outward. And then relegating the, uh, back of the buildings and the parking lots to the center of the block and hiding the, uh, private parking garages and, uh, the parking lots inside the middle of the block. And this is to, uh, further the goals of the overall Wheeler Landing development in which we're trying to evoke an urban village feel that's walkable. Uh, the buildings orient to the south, towards the open green space, which is the main central uh, community amenity that opens up to the Monon Trail frontage along Wheeler Road. And, uh, the center of our site, uh, which is in the top of this image, is our clubhouse, which is a three-story clubhouse building orienting south. And the clubhouse has a swimming pool, um, outdoor wifi courtyard, a grilling area and all of its public amenities oriented to that central green space, which then links and becomes an expense, or an extension to the north off of the main Plaza Park for Wheeler Landing. Our main community entrance is from the north, which on this slide is at the upper right corner. So there's a boulevard entry that would be flanked with, uh, a building on each side of that entry. And as you drive south, you, actually drive right into the center of the site to the clubhouse leasing office. And that becomes kind of the central public hub of our site. And, uh, the, the site itself, all the buildings have front entry doors off of the perimeter sidewalks around the north, south, east and west sides of the site. We also have, uh, some pedestrian ways that'll bring you between the buildings into the center of the site, the parking areas. So we're linking our parking areas to the perimeter, uh, pedestrian ways as well. And each building has a unique character and architecture to them. And I think we have an additional attachment. You remember what that attachment is called Eric, by chance? There we go. Yes, thank you. This, uh, is labeled building type A. This is the, uh, two larger L-shaped buildings that were on the aerial view and site plan. These buildings, uh, facades would be what would be adjacent to the main Wheeler Landing community Plaza space. And while it's a larger building, we're breaking down the scale of the building into three pieces. So starting at the east end, which is the corner building here, the trail, we are anchored with a corner tower. And that building is an Italianate architectural style. So it'll be a mix of, uh, stone siding and painted trim. Then there's a pedestrian connection that links it to the middle building. Uh, again, it's a mix of, uh, brick and stone, but it's a different color palette as you're seeing in the, uh, rendering. And then, uh, lastly, it steps down in scale to the third building. That's a two-story flat roof building. And we're dropping the scale down to focus to the center of the site where the clubhouse would be just to the left of this building and, becomes the focus. This is the rear of these buildings at the rear parking, uh, courts showing the private garages being tucked into the mid-block conditions. And, uh, we also have, uh, units on the rear of the site that would, uh, be on top of the parking garages, looking out towards the parking lots. And, uh, as part of our landscape feature, we are planting the parking lots with the center row of trees in the middle of the parking aisles. And that gives us a green canopy for those upper level units on the back of the buildings to look out onto and not just be staring at a parking lot, but have like the green tree canopy. I think the next slides will show us the other building styles. So slide three, this is the clubhouse building, uh, in the center, flanked on each side by two of what were called our building type Bs. So this becomes a, a U-shaped building so that the, um, clubhouse overlooks the pool courtyard with its, uh, amenity spaces, uh, exercise room, club, club room. And, um, we'll have upstairs some, uh, business offices, uh, for the renters to use as well. This building also will have an elevator in it to, uh, allow us to have a, uh, units in this building, which I think total almost fifty units, uh, easy access with an elevator. Uh, I think the next slide, four. This is the, uh, side of the courtyard facing the pool at the top and then the parking lot side of the building facing the parking courts again. And again, building is a different mix of building, uh, materials and colors. And the next slides will be a series of slides depicting, uh, three architectural styles for building type C. Uh, this is the Italianate style, which will be, uh, larger paid roof elements with brackets, uh, mimicking an Italianate architectural character using the Sioux City Williamsburg brick pillar. Uh, this building has a twelve-unit parking garage underneath it with units on top. And we're orienting the parking garage towards the parking courts in the center of the, of the site again, letting the building read as foresighted architecture. Uh, next slide would be a different architectural style of the same building footprint. And, um, this one is the shingle and stone, uh, with a different color palette. And this one, uh, is more of a Cape Cod look to the architectural, uh, character of this building. And I think the last slide would be a, um, craftsman look to the building. So this one would be more of a, um, bracketed architecture and a craftsman style with, uh, craftsman porch detailing and siding. And again, a different material palette and character. I think Eric, that's a summary of the architecture for the site?
Thank you Randy. Um, Randy, myself, John Hart and, and Andy Taylor will be available if you, if you have any additional questions. We really appreciate the time and effort that staff, uh, that you as council and the APC has take, has, uh, given us with this particular project. And I can tell you as a citizen and a friend of the Wheeler family, they are very excited and we're very excited, um, to get this up and moving for the folks here in Westfield. So thank you.
Could I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
In our initial, uh, discussion with Mr. Hart, we talked about availability of parking spaces and that this wouldn't be a, there's private, there would be sixty percent private spaces, is that correct?
Uh, the total parks, uh, parking available as depicted is one point nine three. The, the typical standard is two point oh. Most of the parking you can see is either internal to the unit or underground and actually in the unit itself. There are a few that are here on the south side of what would be called, uh, of, of the, the location right there. But most, and I can't give you the exact percentage, Councilman Edwards, but I could, uh, I could try to get that for. I could, I could try to get that for you in a bit. I can't give you the exact amount that are contained internally or that are garaged, but the vast majority are.
The only thing I don't want is parking along Wheeler Road.
There is no parking along Wheeler Road. In fact, on the top of this, you'll see that's the Monon with a considerable easement there, and then there's Wheeler Road. This is a internal road right here for that purpose, and there is some parking on this internal road as well. The public right-of-way here will have no parking on it.
So you think that the spaces are sufficient to cover?
We think that they're more than sufficient, given our experience. This is, I think, Hart's third or fourth project in Westfield, and this is, they're very, very comfortable, not just the number of spots, but the location of spots relative to where the residents are going to be. All questions I have.
Counselors, any other comments, questions? Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've seen this project three or four times at least, and I am impressed by the attention to detail, and I think it's a great project for this location. Thank you.
Thank you, President John.
That being the case, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 21-05?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion approved and seconded. Cindy, Joe made the motion, Cindy seconded. Cindy Gassar, can you please call the roll?
Yeah, Cindy Spoljerick.
Yes.
Scott Fry.
Yes.
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Mike Johns.
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is ordinance 21-12, amending ordinance 0602, replacing certain sections to allow the council president to serve on the APC and to allow the president of the APC to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. This ordinance had a council introduction on February 8, and it's up for adoption and consideration this evening. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 21-12?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you like to open the floor to discussion?
It wouldn't, this doesn't stipulate that that has to be that, but they are allowed to serve if they so desire. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Open the floor to any questions, comments?
I know there's a little concern here. I talked to a few former councilors, I talked to the mayor, just about history of this, because this original ordinance that we are replacing is an old ordinance before I lived here. And so I can understand, you know, obviously it was put in place for some concerns about separation of powers and various things like that. But I didn't find a great consensus on that from people who had been here longer. So I think it behooves us to do what's best for our city right now, and, you know, I think it would be up to us if we felt like it was inappropriate for the personnel we have to be able to serve in multiple capacities, and I think that that's on us as a council. So I'm in support of this, and just wanted to share with the public that there was not a lot of consensus on research as to why this ordinance we're replacing really was there.
Any other comments? See no other comments? Cindy, would you please call the roll?
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
No.
Cindy Spoljerick?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Motion carries six, one.
And the next item on the agenda is the appointment of a council member to the APC to fill the last seat.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Mike Johns as one of our appointments on the Advisory Plan Commission.
I'll second that.
Got a first and a second. Can we have a vote? Cindy, would you please call a vote?
Okay. Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Cindy Spoljerick?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
No.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Motion carries six, one.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is new business, and it's a discussion on having a traffic study to look at the speed limits at trail crossings and amending the traffic ordinance to reduce speeds in these areas. And I'm going to ask Counselor Gilbert to please lead the discussion on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Johns. For the city, we have a request. We know the public has been very adamant about our trails. We want to make sure that our trails and our trail crossings are as safe as possible. We need to continue to analyze and look at anything we can do as a city in that respect. Mr. Lawler has shared with us that consistency along the way is very important, and we respect the city's wishes. We know we're a couple months out from the HOCS system being installed and operational at the 161st and Monon Crossing, not sure the exact date on that, but we do want to acknowledge to the public that that's a pretty unique solution to a unique intersection. However, we want, we would like to ask the city, Jeremy and City of Westfield, the Police Department, for any recommendations going forward. We have concerns about the 151st and Monon, we have concerns about the 191st and Monon. We would like to know if the city has recommendations about perhaps a consistent speed limit, a consistent reduced speed limit at all trail crossings, any studies that would need to take place, any recommendations from the police and public safety. So we would just like to work with the city to, I guess, update any recommendations going forward so that we can do the best thing for our trail system and all of our pedestrians, bike riders, and car travelers. Thank you.
Yeah, very good, thank you, Counselor. For the record, Jeremy Lawler, Director of Public Works, I have had the conversation with Chief Rush at the Police Department. They, they're in agreement that we would like to look at this speed zone type concept. From our perspective, in order for our speed limits, our laws to be enforceable, they have to be justifiable. So we will, at your request, we'll take, we need to do a traffic study. Traffic study will determine the recommended speed. If it is indeed recommended at 25 or a reduced speed to what it is today, then we can then update the traffic ordinance. I would propose that we look at a whole corridor at one time, so all the Monon crossings at one time. And then likewise, subsequently, depending on what we find there, we need to look at the Midland crossings as well, as well as maybe some others that aren't named trails. But those are the two heaviest-used trails in our, in our system, obviously. So it will, it will take us a little bit of time to, to be able to get a contract together and get a consultant on board and things like that, to be able to define the scope of work and get a bid to be able to do it. It does cost money to look at these things, and then we can, we can move ahead and see what the study determines, and then we'll, we'll make a recommendation and talk to legal about how we proceed, if that's the desire, to create these smaller or slower zones. But from our perspective, we do see some value in that, and hopefully our research will support what we're all saying.
Thank you, Jeremy. The next item on our agenda is, are there any residents who wish to address the council at this time? I don't think there are. Kevin, have you gotten any calls or emails sent in?
No, sir.
Okay. City Council comments?
I got, I got, one, I just want to say, just briefly, Board of Public Works, awesome job on the snow. I mean, seriously, I know I busted your guys' butt on a lot of things, you guys did a phenomenal job. I mean, you know, you can't anticipate those things, I mean, it's not like you get practice on, you know, a foot of snow, you know? I mean, so, I would say you guys did a really good job, and I think I heard that from everybody that I talked to in Westfield. I don't think it's just us up here, I think everybody that, at least that I talked to, they said, man, they really got that snow cleared. I'm like, and it was, and it was, it was light, you know, so it was like blowing all over the place. So anyways, good job on that. I'll just move right into, Finance Committee is next week, and we're going to address a few things. The agenda was out today, so that's about it.
Thank you, Troy. Jake, any comments?
Well-being coalition presented, along with NAMI, which is the National Association of Mental Illness, to our Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Latour is in the House, appreciate Steve and all he does. We presented for a proposition of stigma-free workplace to encourage our employers in the city to support mental health needs for their employees and eradicate stigma for those of us in the city who, who, you know, have stress, anxiety, depression, and then clearly suicidal ideation. We found out from the well-being survey, which we've shared before, that the number one health risk to people of Westfield in terms of what was documented by doctors was mental health, four times as much as cancer, way more than heart disease, and we know that it's an issue that can touch all of us or our loved ones. So appreciate Mr. Latour for allowing the Well-being Coalition and NAMI to make that challenge for our employers to consider becoming a stigma-free workplace. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Joe, do you have any comments?
We haven't had a chance to meet yet, but I've served on the Oversight Committee before, and one of the things I think we have to take a look at is, you know, what can we accomplish? It's pretty broad, and all of those things we would never get our arms around in a year. So we're going to have to look at, what do we, you know, what does Scott and Jake think to are the important areas, and then concentrate on a few important areas and, you know, leave some other work for other committees in future years, I think. But we do have, law requires us to have this Oversight Committee, so we need to look at what we think's important and go from there.
Thank you. Scott, any thoughts?
The only thing I would add is, big vote on Wednesday. Library Board's going to vote on a potential new location. I don't know in four years on the Library Board if we've ever had anybody show up for one of our board meetings, but if anybody's interested in seeing how that plays out, it is open to the public.
Thank you, Scott. Cindy Spoljerick?
Can I just first say thank you to all of our folks that have to work outside in what has been really nasty conditions? You know, our police, our fire, our streets, our stormwater, anyone who's got to work outside. Bless your heart. Thank you, thank you, thank you. APC was light, we have the, of course, recommendation for the Wheeler Landing that we heard tonight, and helped the public hearing for the revised, if you would, Wood Robinson PUD. And our agendas are going to be getting thicker with more hearings coming up, so I'll keep you apprised.
Thank you, Cindy. Scott Fry?
None.
Thank you. All right. Is Mayor, Mayor Cook on the line? Okay. Well, hearing, hearing no comments, then. I guess I will call the meeting of the Westfield City Council to an end. Jer? Thank you.